Please stand with me. I'm going to ask Clerk Straight to start us off in prayer.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you. We can join together today to consider the business before us in regard to the county. Lord, we thank you for the rain and many blessings that you're giving us at this time of renewal, and we just thank you for all you've done for us. Pray that you would guide us and direct us, and that all will be done responsibly and with mind toward respecting everyone involved. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Clerk. If you'd please remain standing for the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God indivisible, et veritatis.
Okay, again, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Hampshire County Commission meeting Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. Commissioner Mance is not able to be with us here this morning. However, we do have a quorum of Commissioner Brill and myself. So I will call the meeting to order, and first item of business was the minutes of our previous meeting, and all commissioners did have a digital copy of that ahead of time. So I'd entertain a motion to either approve those or address any corrections needed at this time.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted?
Okay, and I'll second that motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, we will move on to the presidents and commissioners' reports. Other than what's on the agenda there, I don't have too much. I had my Hampshire County Public Service District meeting this past week. Also attended the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting the week before. Did take several calls, emails about the various projects going on in the county. Electric line, windmills. Other than that, I think mostly what I've been working on will probably come up in the agenda. So I will pass the floor along to Commissioner Brill.
Thank you, President Eglinger. I actually have attended my first LEPC regional meeting this past last week, and then also had our first county LEPC meeting. Those are both very informative and gave me a lot of insight as to what the emergency planners do within our region and certainly within our county. And also have attended, as you referenced, many numerous meetings regarding the transmission lines and also the wind turbine project in Cape and Springs. There was actually three meetings last week regarding those projects. Lots of community input, lots of community involvement in all of those meetings. There were lots of folks that attended. Lots of good information regarding those. I know there's an additional meeting scheduled for next week, May the 20th in Cape and Bridge regarding the transmission line as well. And so I'm sure, as President Eglinger alluded to, within the agenda, we'll be discussing some of that further in the meeting. So that's all I have at this time.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brill. Clerk, do we have any maintenance, day-to-day maintenance items you'd like to bring to us?
Not much, just one letter from the sheriff asking that you guys approve. A letter to national drug control policy in regard to designating Hampshire County as a high-intensity drug trafficking area, and it's something you've done in the past. I've got a copy of the previous one now.
Apparently it helps with some federal funding and so on in regard to task force issues.
I'll make a motion that we approve President Eglinger to sign the designation, basically designating Hampshire County as a high-intensity drug trafficking area for the benefit of the sheriff's office.
Thank you, Commissioner Brill. I'll second the motion. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Sheriff sent a letter requesting, no, actually that's his new office hire he wanted to make you all aware of.
Need to take any action on that?
Yeah.
Approve the hire?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we accept the sheriff's recommendation for the new hire.
Second, all those in favor of the memo from the sheriff on the consent for appointment of Sarah Sherman to tax deputy? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Want to keep going? We have a tax exoneration.
Alrighty.
Make a motion that we approve the tax exonerations as submitted?
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the tax exonerations submitted since our last meeting by the assessor's office, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Why you run me out of housekeeping?
Clerk, if we could, I'd want to jump down under correspondence and get touch on the correspondence that the HCHLSC board sent us?
Yes, very well. Actually, what that is, in regard to, well, they're here, and they could address it, but it's essentially a line item budget request to transfer funds for different use that's already been approved in their current budget. But if you guys would care to speak or if you would like to...
Mrs. Shaw, would you want to come up and explain any further?
I would be delighted.
Okay. Come on up, then.
As you know, we were not in time to address you by March for your, any changes to the budget. So after March, we discovered that there's an opportunity to locate an office space in Taggart Hall. And so we were hoping to adjust our budget dollars and use some of the ones that we have not used at all toward paying rent, which is $200 a month, and a shared utility, which was $100 a month. So that would be $300 or $3,600 from our current budget of $5,000. Because we still are in this fiscal year, we're hoping to request some dollars from this year to pay maybe even up to December. And that way, we wouldn't be pulling too many dollars from our 2025, '26 budget in case we need to pay for a little bit more on our landmarks commission activities due to pulling back of grants and things like that. So do you have questions for me on, I did send some of the rationale, and it seems like it's such a win-win with Taggart Hall and their museum and us, so that when people come, especially after four o'clock, to meet with us or have meetings at times when this place, the courtroom, is busy and we can't, we thought that this would be a wonderful opportunity to locate not only our office, our artifacts, our documents, all in one location, so that all the board doesn't have to come to my house, and I don't have to lug them out each time I come.
Well, I'll just comment for Commissioner Brill that, you know, I did attend your all's meeting for the entire meeting, and, you know, a voice to you guys that I've definitely supported this. You know, I think it's a small ask for, you know, a good effort to continue to make our historic landmarks, you know, a better-known board in the county and more active. It's a step in the right direction for all that. So, you know, I would agree to the letter of correspondence here in asking for the, you know, permission to move their current funds and then the balance needed later in the year. So again, I think that the balance needed would need to come on the agenda for formality purposes later. But I certainly support your effort to go ahead and start the rental, if that's what you all choose to do. So my motion would be to grant that part of the request at this time for them to start their rental of a space at Taggart Hall.
That helps us move forward, because we couldn't even do anything with lease agreements or anything like that until we knew that there would be some...
Commissioner Eglinger, or President Eglinger, could I get clarification that that includes the budget revision, the line item budget revision to move the purpose of the funds?
Yes, that's fine in my motion.
Thank you.
And again, I think for the small amount that you may need later, just keep in touch with us and get that on the agenda when needed.
I'm not sure...
We're waiting for a second.
Yeah.
I think he's...
Go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor of the Hampshire County Historic Landmarks investing part of their current budget in their space at Taggart Hall, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Very much. I'm not sure whether he got the revised budget last night, but...
I'm sorry?
I'm not sure whether President Eglinger...
Oh, yes, he did. It's laying in front of him, and I made sure of it.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, Mrs. Shaw, too. I just wanted to say thank you for the email, the very detailed email on all the benefits of doing that. Appreciate that information. As you know, we all sit on many different boards, so it's hard to gather everything that's going on, but I appreciate you taking the time to present that to us and all the information and the ways it can benefit your board. I think it's going to be a good transition for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Okay, we are running right pretty close on schedule. We will now ask Mr. Matthew Hott to come up and explain about the annex roof contract with Blackstone. Good morning, Matthew.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
This is the proposal and contract on the last page. That's for the county commissioner's signature on the last page. You already approved this.
Make a motion that we authorize President Eglinger to sign the roofing proposal contract with Blackstone Roofing in regards to the annex building?
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Mr. Hott, did you have anything else for us?
Was looking, not on this nature, but what was discussed last week. I have talked to the surveyor, and I think he may have already been down there as far as that relates to the old board office roof to keep the day report grant thing moving. At what point in time did you want me to take off, to take off and getting that ready and get it out to bid? Can do that as soon as you all would want to.
Yeah, I think I'd have to go on the agenda, but I would say
Okay.
For the next meeting, definitely get it on there if that's possible.
Okay, sounds good, and we all should have more of the upfront stuff done by then, I would hope.
Okay. Thank you for looking into that.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. President, we could move the sheriff's memo to move the car, surplus car up. That's the 10 o'clock item.
Oh, okay. So we're going to go ahead and move the request to transfer the surplus car that the sheriff has to the town of Romney up as we reserve that right to change things around there in the agenda times. Just let me read it over here quickly.
Make a motion that we approve sheriff's memorandum requesting to declare the 2010 Ford Explorer as surplus property and therefore transfer it over to the town of Romney?
Okay, I'll second the motion. All those in favor of the no-cost transfer for the 2010 Ford Explorer, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. What'd you say, clerk? Okay. Well, I think we're close enough for the next item that I will go ahead and ask, I believe we have some planning commission representatives here if they would like to come and speak at this time on the planning commission ordinance. Morning, gentlemen. Thanks for coming in.
Okay, yeah, we'd like to, we looked at that ordinance. We'd like to bring it back to your all's discretion and approval, but we also like to add that to proceed with an outside lawyer to make sure it's very liable to work due to circumstances we ran into the last few months.
Okay. Okay. Just for clarification for the public there, if you follow the meetings, at our last meeting, we discussed some changes to our planning commission ordinance, this strictly being the rules that set the ordinance, not specifically how the ordinance is, affects the different building codes and that sort of thing, nothing like that. But it's the ordinance that sets the rules for the ordinance itself. And we had asked the planning commission to review that. Mr. Delaplane has just explained to me that they voted, that they approved the current ordinance, but you are requesting that we have outside legal counsel just to check it over one more time?
Yes, sir.
I think I had, just for further clear, I had put that in my motion at the last meeting, but we can, the commission, if that would be the nature of our decision to do that today, we can go ahead and do that, but we may have been able to go ahead and do that, but I respect your efforts in getting the planning commission to approve and then seeing if we wanted to have it legally looked over. So, you know, I think we could do the reading, clerk, as you have it on the agenda. However, if, I will note if we, if we choose to do legal review and something changes, the change will have to be posted, which would, again, reset the process. But I don't think there's a problem with doing those two simultaneously at this time, and I'll open that for discussion among Commissioner Brill, since he's here this morning with us.
You know, I would agree. I certainly appreciate the planning commission's efforts in putting this together, and certainly, you know, we'll heed to you guys, any recommendations, and agree with President Eglinger. If your recommendation is for it to seek outside counsel, I would absolutely concur. That's the right thing to do. If reading it today is proper, then I'm certainly fine with that.
Clerk, being that you're the clerk, do you see any problem with simultaneously starting the reading and...
Well, I think, no, I don't. I think typically proclaiming it as a first reading and presenting it or making it available to the public rather than actually reading the full document is sufficient at this point. And then, like you said, should you need to do revisions, then you would kind of go back and repost.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to the public that should we find something in there that's not quite right, then, and we have to change, that would basically reset the hearing process. But for time's sake, I will move that we seek outside counsel for final review at this point, along with starting the first reading and post of the proposed ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor concerning the planning commission ordinance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, for your hard work on this, and I appreciate all the time and effort you guys put into the planning commission.
Thank you.
So for the record, we will have this available downstairs in the hallway for public use, and also I'm sure Aaron can post it to our website at the close of meeting, so.
Okay, so again, that'll be available here at the clerk's office in the hallway. I believe that's what you said, clerk?
We have a table down there.
And also, we will get Mr. Cox to post that on the website.
Well, I'm sure the planning office will have copies available as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Clerk, was Ms. Hoover planning on attending today, or did she just have a...
She talked like she was. She is coming from Elkins.
Okay.
We can proceed. I have the proclamation here. If you like, I circulated that to you as well.
Well, if she's making an effort to come from Elkins, then I would like to put that off at least till the proper time.
It may be a foggy road this morning.
Yeah, and we're running early, so we'll...
You have gotten the invoices. If you wanted to look at those for a few minutes, I didn't know if you had anything else in mind?
We'll look at the invoices, yes, and then I think we could move the 1015 item up as well, so we'll...
Your call, all up to you.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and look at the invoices, and then we'll move the 1015 item up on the agenda. Commissioner Brill, any questions on the invoices for the budget?
No, sir. I'll make a motion that we approve the invoices as submitted since our previous meeting.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All those in favor of the motion to approve the invoices, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
It's on the doorway.
I will go ahead and open the floor for public comment. I usually save that till the end. However, I do have another meeting after this meeting, so finishing on time is important, or extra important for me today, so I'll open the floor since we have a few extra minutes for any public comment at this time, which I normally do at the end, but again, any public comments got, should be related to the agenda as, as well as the fact that, the reminder that the commission can't act on anything that's not on the agenda. So do I have anybody that wishes to address the commission for public comment this time? Okay, nobody's talkative today. Real quick clerk, I need to jump back to the planning commission ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't believe in my motion, I specified what counsel we would use.
Correct.
So I'd like to amend my motion and suggest that we use Mr. Richard Gray, Gay, he has already been working with the planning commission, I believe. Is that, is that right gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
And the planning commission would agree to using him for that further counsel? Okay, so I'll amend my motion, I forgot to put that detail in there.
Yeah, and I'll approve that amendment.
Okay, so we have an amendment that's been stated and seconded to make that review counsel, Mr. Richard Gay from Morgan County, to look at that for us. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Well done, thank you.
Okay, we are down to, we have Ms. Stephanie Hoover here from Mountain Heart, and she has a proclamation to present to the commission.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, do you care to read the proclamation, and then I'm just gonna talk a little bit about it before you read it, is that okay?
Sure, sure.
Or do you want me to read the proclamation?
Would you please sit down to microphone?
Yeah, we're on YouTube, so when you're not by the microphone, people can't hear you.
Yeah, that's fine. So I would just read a little bit about what the proclamation is about, and then if you can read the proclamation, can we do it that way?
Sure.
Okay. So, I'm Stephanie Hoover, I'm the Provider Engagement Specialist with Mountain Heart Community Services. We did invite providers to attend today, but I don't think any of them could make it. But I'm just gonna read a little bit about Provider Appreciation Day. So, May 9th was Provider Appreciation Day, and it was established in 1996 to honor the dedication of childcare providers. It's celebrated annually on the Friday before Mother's Day, and it acknowledges those who nurture young children. Despite facing significant challenges such as low wages and lack of benefits, providers play a vital role in children's development. We appreciate their willingness to listen, guide, inspire, encourage, and simply be present. Most importantly, we thank them for being a vital part of a child's journey. Mountain Heart Community Services expresses deep gratitude to these essential childcare providers for their commitment to nurturing and educating children.
Okay. Would you like me to read the proposed proclamation at this time?
Yes, please.
Okay. Proclamation for Hampshire County Commission, whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas the childcare system supports children's growth, development, and educational advancement, and creates a positive economic impact for families and communities, and whereas childcare providers are essential to the health of our communities by fostering welcoming spaces, support working families, and creating positive enriching environments where children can develop lifelong skills, and whereas Hampshire County recognizes that childcare has been and continues to be a lifeline for families, communities, and the economy. As such, it has provided much-needed support to providers to help sustain the viability of childcare, and whereas support for affordable, accessible, high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to help families work, support children's healthy development and learning, and keep our economy growing. Now therefore, we hereby proclaim May 9th, 2025, as Provider Appreciation Day in Hampshire County, West Virginia, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work and how valuable they are for our communities. So, Commissioner Brill, if you would agree to that, I certainly do, could we have a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion that we accept the proclamation as submitted by the Mountain, Mountain Heart for Hampshire County.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And I thank you ladies for making the trip here today for that, much appreciated.
Yeah, thank you very much for being here and for all the efforts, everything you do, very, very appreciative.
Stephanie, can I scan that to you after they get their signatures on?
Yes, yes, that would be great.
That way we can post it as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as stated on the agenda, we reserve the right to rearrange items, and we are running ahead today, so time listed is our approximate for discussion and action by the commission. I'm not aware of anybody coming in for the 1015 item, so I'm gonna move that up, and that item is discussion and decision on whether to retain outside counsel to advise the county on course of action available related to pending energy transmission projects. I will, Commissioner Mance not being here, he had recommended to the commission that this be put on the agenda, so I will just make that statement so that, with him not being able to be here today. As far as discussion and decision on that, there's a few things that I agree there, there's a few things that concern me, and I'll bring those to the table at this time. The, the decision to hire outside counsel there, for me, would heavily depend on what the cost would be moving forward with that. You know, the reason I bring that up, and I know we are in a very sensitive time now with the energy transmission projects. However, I, you know, being in the rural Hampshire County that we are in, I think all three commissioners could, although we do have two brand-new commissioners, could attest to the budget restrictions that we deal with day in and day out. You know, counsel, legal counsel to a project like this, you know, and again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not savvy to the cost, but I would certainly support some guidance for us as a county. However, again, I'll go back to our budget. One thing you folks know about me as a commissioner is I'm very realistic, and you know, we have roofs to fix, deputy cars to buy, parks, parks to keep up for the kids, you know, 4H buildings to build, and the list goes on. So, my point is, is that I'm not against Commissioner Mance's suggestion to certainly guide us through the project and helping the county with this, but at the same time, I wouldn't commit to spending every spare dollar we have on something, on, you know, fighting a fight that is, I'm gonna be straightforward and honest, a very uphill battle fight, and also a fight, you know, between private landowners or a discussion between private landowners and the, and the energy transmission company. So, again, I certainly, you know, entertain the idea of some counsel in advising the county on how to advise our folks on this. I do it hesitantly though, knowing that the cost could escalate quickly out of the reach of what I think we could realistically accomplish. So, again, not trying to be negative, not, but certainly trying to be realistic. So, I will open the floor for Commissioner Brill to comment on this as he chooses.
Thank you, President Eglinger. As I had said in my opening remarks and my reports, obviously I've, and many of us, all of us, I'm sure all three commissioners have received lots of correspondence regarding specifically this transmission line. There's been obviously several community meetings, and I'm sure will be, continue to be more. There is our ongoing, folks all up and down this potential corridor, Maryland, West Virginia, Eastern Panhandle, that are looking at the exact same things that we're looking at and trying to address it and determine the best course of action. Most all the constituents that I have spoken to seem certainly have some concern regarding this project and whether or not there's really any true benefits to the county. I absolutely agree with Commissioner Eglinger that we are responsible for ensuring that the funds of this, of the county are appropriated accordingly, appropriately, and certainly don't want to be wasteful in any of those, and I certainly understand legal counsel oftentimes can be very expensive. However, I feel as though at this time with this transaction, what's going on, that it would be beneficial to at least consider the retention of some type of outside counsel. I could, I would think that we would be able to at least reach out to some potential attorneys and get some idea of what the cost would be. I feel like if the community is, feels as strongly as they seem to about this item, it's, we need to do all that we can do to ensure that we're looking out for their best interest. And obviously, I'm certainly not an attorney, and don't know all the ins and outs of the legal world, and oftentimes their advice can be worthwhile, certainly, to ensure we're moving in the right direction, and if there is a way that we can retain that, and again, I would say within a reasonable funding, and the money not being too ridiculous, I would certainly be in favor of potentially going that route and seeing if there is some outside legal counsel that could help us navigating these projects, because this one is currently ongoing, I'm not too sure, based on some of the meetings that I've been to, that this is gonna be the last one that we're gonna see in the near future, so. That would be, that's my, my two cents.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Brill. Would you, I would agree to looking into counsel with some, some initial cost estimates of what we were looking at after they understand our scope in the project. Would you agree to that and prefer to make that to a motion?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I will agree to that, and I will move that we seek out some outside counsel services, and what those fees associated with those services would be, take this up at another meeting.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. And we will work out the details, when we get a hold of Commissioner Mance, we can work out the details on some suggestions of who to call to get some information on that. Okay, clerk, have we hit everything we need to hit there?
Yes, sir, I think we have covered everything that's been posted. Mr. Aaron, just brought me the bylaws from the HCSA board, but you didn't want to do anything with them today, did you?
Well, I believe we've already made a motion to approve those, and they've been signed, so he just wants you to record them for the advisory board, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And I don't have anything else.
And I see we have some of our. And I see we have some of our fellow representatives here today, Delegate Hillenbrand and Senator Thorne. You gentlemen wish to address the commission for anything today? No, sir? Okay. Well, I appreciate you guys. I always appreciate the way you guys participate with our meetings. That's, I really like that, and I think that's good for the community, and I'm glad you guys serve in the way you do. So, thank you for coming today, even though you don't have anything special for us. I just appreciate your effort being here. Okay, if we have nothing else to come before the commission, and we've looked at all receipts and invoices, and all the day-to-day items are taken care of, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor of adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.